On a clock. I will, I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Dave Roseacher is the Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial. Therefore, they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during the hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on the consent. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room, and there are no changes to the consent agenda. So I'm going to get started reading the consent cases. These cases, like I was just talking, and I'm going to repeat myself here. The cases that we have on consent today are all on for approval. If you're down here for one of those cases and you want to speak to it or you're in opposition to it, when I read the case, stand up and ask for it to be removed. It'll then be removed, and we'll take that in order as we go through the regular agenda. So any case left on consent today, if it's left on consent, it's on for approval. There are no layover cases, and it will be approved, and no other action will be taken on any of those cases. So let's get started with Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-12-23-241. Applicant AVG-CFM204QLLC. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Coventry Replat 17 in minor plat outside city limits. This was laid over from our October, our October meeting. Location northwest of 204th and Harrison Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nine, Case C-10-23-269. C-12-23-270. Applicant Redwood Apartments Homes. It's on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Redwood Honeysuckle, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R6. Location northeast of 203rd Street and Honeysuckle Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Ten, Case C-10-16-287. Applicant Jasper Stone, 192nd and Dodge LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Avenue One. Location south of 192nd Street and West Dodge Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Case C-10-23-274. Applicant Talia Witherspoon. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GC to NBD along with approval of the Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement District. Location 2001 Vinton Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Case C-10-23-265. Applicant Dundee Bank. It is on for approval. Request approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location southeast of 61st and Maple Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-10-23-268. Applicant Take Lee. It is on for approval. Request approval of the Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location northeast of Riverfront Drive and Gallup Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Case C-11-23-271. Applicant Redwood Apartment Homes. It is on for approval. Request approval of a Plan Unit Development Overlay District. Location northeast of 203rd Street and Honeysuckle Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C-7-6-211. Applicant Alvin Kobs. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow hospital services general in the GEO District. Location 8552 Cass Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-7-23-272. Applicant Philip Nary Blessed Sacrament. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit to Section 55-883-Q to allow secondary education in the R435 District. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Case C-7-98-216. Applicant Westside High School. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R2 District along with a waiver to Section 55-146 Height to allow a 50-foot-tall building addition. Location 8715 Pacific Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. I think that is all of the items on consent. They're all on consent for approval. Do we have a motion for those consent items?
Motion to approve, number, case numbers two, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, 17, and 18.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Before I call for the vote, I just want to make certain all those items that were just read, they're on for consent for approval. Once they're voted on, there will be no further action taken on those today. So if, if you missed it and you wanted one taken off, here's your opportunity. Okay? Kathy, will you record the vote, please?
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Okay, we're going to go on to the regular agenda. We'll start with the administrative meeting only. That means there will be no opportunity for public comment. Agenda Item Number One, Case C-10-21-47. C-12-21-48. Applicant Woodsonia 168 State LLC. Request final plat approval of the Hill. Lots 397 through 402 Outlot P, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Location northeast of 168th and State Streets. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the fourth phase of the Hill. It includes six lots to be zoned mixed-use and one outlot. There are a few items needed to amend with the mixed-use development agreement, but those are pretty standard items, as well as showing the right-of-way accurately on the final plat as it proceeds to City Council. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and MU subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use agreement in compliance with all regulations prior to forwarding to City Council, and approval of the final plat subject to the three conditions in the report prior to City Council.
Any comments, questions from the Board? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and MU subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement in compliance with all applicable regulations prior to forwarding the request onto City Council, and approval of the final plat subject to meeting the three conditions outlined in the recommendation report prior to forwarding the request onto City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Still on administrative. Agenda Item Number Three, Case C... Nope, I'm sorry. We're not, we are no longer on administrative. Case, Agenda Item Number Three, Case C-8-23-264. Applicant Lance Paulson. Request approval of a special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the HI District. This was laid over from the November meeting. Location northeast of 28th Avenue and Dare Park Boulevard. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Joe Duttlaffs with Thompson, Driesen, and Dorner, 10836 Old Mill Road, engineer for the project. I'm also here with the applicant, Ryan Peterson, and Lance Paulson. We're here asking for a special use permit and available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions before we hear from Eric?
Joe, I have a question, if you could come up. It's my understanding there's some existing concrete rubble on the site. Can you elaborate on that? I believe it perhaps was a different operator, owner, but I just wanted to ask that question.
Correct. There's, currently it's, there's an operation going on, but it's being operated by a different owner. So our crushing it is looking to purchase this property and continue the crushing operations, but they wanted to do it with the right permits. So that's why we're here today.
Thank you. I'm glad it's not your client that's doing it. I think I knew that already, but I just wanted to put that on the record.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we've obviously discussed this. It was laid over last month. The applicant met with city staff and worked through many of the details and additional information that we were looking for, and their resubmittal has provided clarification, revised site plan, updated operating statement. We went through a lot of that in the pre-meeting, so I don't think I need to go through all of those details here, but this request does include a waiver of separation. Scrap and salvage services needs a 300-foot separation from any residential or office zoning. And the zoning is in place right now. This property is zoned HI with a special use permit. We have typically supported a waiver of that separation if there's extensive vegetation and they can distance the actual operation of the crushing, which is being done. So the actual operation and the crushing would be more than 400 feet away from any of those adjacent zoning districts that call for that separation typically. There's a very detailed operating statement that provides a lot of additional context. There are a few items that will still need to be updated regarding the site plan, but most of those previous concerns or items that was listed in last month's report have been adequately addressed. So staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the HI District subject to the 16 conditions in the report.
Any additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I move for the approval of a special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the HI District subject to the following 16 conditions.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Agenda Item Number Four, Case C-10-22-319. C-8-3-89. Applicant Patrick Ackerman. Request approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow aviation services in the AV District with approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District along with rezoning from DR and AV to AV. This was laid over from our February meeting of this year. Location northeast of 72nd Street and Bennington Road. Patrick, you're up.
Thank you, guys. Pat Ackerman, 11901 North 72nd Street, owner of the North Omaha Airport. It's been about a year, a little less than that, since I was last here with you guys. We've come back with a plan. We spent most of the summer working with the FAA to analyze any potential issues that may exist around the airport, and that's been turned over to the city for analysis with their consultants. We've revised the plan to remove the hotel and the entertainment piece of it, strictly focused around hangars. Nineteen hangars there on the east-southeast side. We have nine hangars up to the north, three along 72nd Street, and then a runway extension to the north. So that, that remains the same as we had before. I will stay on the record that the RPZ zone, the threshold, does not change. It's just an additional safety buffer for pilots, additional concrete for landing and taking off in the opposite direction. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions you guys have for me about the plan.
Okay, thank you, Pat. We talked pretty extensively upstairs. Any other proponents? Come on down, sir. Give your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Mark Farrell, and I live at 12404 North 69th Street. And I am for this project. I'm a general aviation recreational pilot, if you will. I've flown in and out of the airport for approximately 30 years, and I can see this as a very advantageous thing for the airport and for the community around the airport. Currently, it's a very subdued aviation activity there. Very, very little activity. I think what Patrick is, is planning is very, very good for general aviation in general. Unfortunately, it is a depressed industry a little bit. Not everybody goes out and flies like they used to 20 years ago. And I certainly don't think the airport's going to be anything like it was 20 or 30 years ago, but I do think it's a step in the right direction for the North Omaha Airport and the community out there. The, the hangar space is needed. People now travel to other communities and hangar their airplanes. Wahoo, Fremont, places that are quite a ways away from actually where they live. So I think it's a great thing to do for the airport that's been there for 70-plus years. It's, it's all kind of focused on general aviation, recreation, flying, single-engine airplanes. You know, even currently, very infrequent. I mean, you just don't see twin-engine airplanes there. The runway, even with the extension, really isn't a, it's not a twin-engine or a jet-type airport. The activity level at North Omaha is way, way less than Epley, way less than Millard. The activity right now is, you know, probably less than 10 takeoff and landing operations per week. So even if it, even if it doubled, that would be, that would be awesome to see more activity at the airport. So I stand in support of it. Yep.
Louis Moise, I live at 12405 North 69th Street. I just want to say that I am for anything that could benefit this airport, especially the appearance. It has improved in the past year, and I hope it continues to improve visually. And I love seeing a little plane. It is, again, very minimal use, not annoyance. When we moved there, we knew there was an airport here. So, you know, definitely like to see that continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents?
Lawrence Shakeman at 6515 Stones Throw Drive, Omaha, Nebraska, 68152. As a resident living near the North Omaha Airport for over 30 years, I have many concerns related to the proposed expansion of the airport. After the Planning Board meeting of February 1st of 2023, I feel it's my responsibility to comment on several of the issues brought up by proponents for the North Omaha Airport expansion. One comment was the zoning rules were written for Epley Airfield under Section 55-693, definitions listed besides Epley, Millard, North Omaha Airport, and Duran-Sky Ranch Airfield. Therefore, the City Council intended for the North Omaha Airport to be included in the zoning requirements outlined in Section 55-693 through 55-698. Another comment made by a proponent was certain trees need to be removed west of 72nd Street and parallel to the runway.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Can I ask you if those microphones, can you bend them down a little bit towards you? Okay, it might help us hear you a little better.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's all right.
You want me to start over or just go for it?
No, you're fine.
Okay.
You were on trees.
Okay. Trees removed west of 72nd Street and parallel to the runway. Also, that comment incorrectly based on 55-698, non-conforming uses states in Paragraph A, "Any land use lawfully existing on effect, effective date of this chapter, March 4th of 1987, may continue subject to the provisions of the section." Paragraph 2C of the same section, "Damage or destruction states, 'Any non-conforming tree which has been damaged or decayed to the extent of 50% or more shall be removed.'" As an opponent of, to the expansion, I want to highlight certain portions of 55-693 through 55-698. 55-698, "Non-conforming uses." States in Paragraph B, "Enlarging degree of non-conformance states, 'No non-conforming structure shall be built, replaced, altered, replanted, or allowed to grow to a height that increases the degree of non-conformance or that violates the height limits established in the section.'" Therefore, the hotel, airport, hangars being proposed, the building of these structures on this site specifically is prohibited by this ordinance. Based on 55-698, "Non-conforming uses," in Paragraph C, "Damage or destruction line. Should a structure occupied by lawful conforming use be damaged to the extent that the cost of restoration exceeded 50% of the replacement cost of the structure, the non-conforming use shall not, no longer be permitted." The structures along the east side of the runway that are proposed to be restored would violate this part of the ordinance. Based on Section 55-698, "Non-conforming uses," states in Paragraph D, "Abandonment. Any structure or property contained a lawful non-conforming use becomes vacant or unused for a continuous period of six months. Any subsequent use must conform to all the airport zoning requirements." The structures along the east side of the runway that are not slated for restoration would violate this part of the, part of the ordinance. Based on 65-595 and 55-596, runway area zones, having a width of 1,000 feet symmetrically located along both sides of the centerline of runway and extend 200 feet beyond the atommost landing threshold, departure limit, and the departure threshold at each end of the runway. The height limit shall be the level of the runway. The fundamental principle of this chapter is to provide for zones in which development is restricted. 1980, Section 55-692. This chapter on airport zoning has nothing to do with airport landing and departing, but to restrict development from entering the restricted airspace around the North Omaha Airport. The purpose of this zoning requirement also details what can and can't be built on the North Omaha Airport after March 4th, 1987. I want to emphasize that restricting development within the airport after March 90, 1987. A non-compliance house was built at 2012-535 North 72nd Street in 2012, which violates the airport encroachment area as defined in Paragraph A. In addition, several houses were built after 2012 and are listed in exhibit... exhibit A. I'll read those off afterwards. This house was built in, after the nineteen eighty-seven, and in violation of sections five ninety-five, fifty-five nine, five ninety-six, plus fifty-five six ninety-eight, enlarging degree of nonconformance. The location of this house is a potential safety issue, both for the people living in the home, as well as the pilot and the passengers in the plane. This act, act of negligence allowing this home to be built will result in lawsuits filed against the city for not following airport zoning ordinances. The city of Omaha created these zoning orders, only the city council can change the ordinances. The recent owner of the North Omaha Airport should have known that what the zoning restrictions prevent any nonconformist development within the runway area zone prior to purchasing the property. Now the owner is requesting waivers to the, to the airport zoning ordinance to bail him out of a business decision he made. There is only one option available to the planning board, retract this proposal for the Omaha Airport, no matter what changes are suggested. This would not be in compliance with fifty, fifty-five six ninety-two through fifty, fifty, fifty-five six ninety-eight, and only increase the number of structures in noncompliance. The homes that were built after two thousand and seven that are within the five-hundred-foot buffer east of west of the centerline of the runway, twelve four oh four North Sixty Ninth Street, twelve three fourteen North Sixty Ninth Street, sixty-six, sixty-eight, sixty-nine Willow Street, sixty-eight, sixty-six Willow Street, sixty-eight, sixty-five Willow Street, twelve six twenty-one North Seventy Second Street, twelve five thirty-five North of Seventy Second, on Seventy Second Street, and twelve four twenty-five North Seventy Second Street. Yes, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Lawrence. Any other opponents wishing to speak?
I think he's got some information to give to, you would say, spread, give to the board.
My name is Kathy Lanfair, and I live adjacent to the North Omaha Airport at seventy-thirty Bennington Road. I am here with more questions than statements. Looking at this proposal is like looking at Swiss cheese. My background is business development. It is still incomplete and still does not include the information we all need to make a decision. I still see a hotel in the plan. A third of a building doesn't show detail, and is said to be used other than housing airplanes. This isn't a mistake. After nine months, almost a year, I still see a hotel. Why is the septic still the same size? Why does each hangar have a bathroom? Why isn't a list of violations that have been corrected provided? And what is the business plan? Can any of you succinctly describe what this plan all entails? Initially, a leisure, aviator's dream, restaurant, hotel, bar, spa, but now includes a major square footage, large hangar to house multiple airplanes. This will require at least four employees to move each airplane, one for each wing, one, one for the tail, and one for a tug. Where does this fit in with leisure aviation, though? Again, does this all fit into the confines of the airport? Last meeting, we gave stats comparing it to local airports, and the plan did not fit. Is there any draftsman, designer, architect who knows or understands aviation involved with this plan? Has anyone from the FAA ever been consulted? Has anyone from the Nebraska Department of Transportation for, in aeronautics, ever been consulted? If I were opening up a venue like this, I certainly would want to seek the safety of my clients. I would engage somebody who completely understands what this is. Last meeting, traffic got dumped out onto Bennington Road. Bennington Road is a small road with one exit, one entrance. The Irvington Fire Department already had said how dangerous that is. Why don't we rather look at the exit already shown and drawn up in Northern Hills plot plan that can divert traffic onto Sixty Ninth Street, Seventy Second Street, or Highway seventy-five? This would be beneficial because Highway thirty-six, where the traffic is going to get dumped out onto, directly intersects with the most dangerous intersection, and that is Seventy Second Street and Highway thirty-six. What is the business plan? Where have any safety violations been corrected? Instead, we see more. The FAA recommendations not followed, two homes built within the violation area called TZ. That's your B one, B two example that's been given to you. Yet, this plan has five more buildings that are even closer to the runway than the two homes that the FAA tagged that are already in violation for safety. So the plan adds five more major structures the FAA obviously would deem unsafe. The Nebraska Department of Transportation and Aeronautics requires a fifty-foot wide runway. The current size is forty feet wide. This plan can never achieve the safety requirement for fifty feet, as they have the septic adjacent to the runway. That's your exhibit A. Again, is there any designer, drafter, looking at this plan who understands aviation rules and regs? With so many safety violations, this plan continues to stockpile more in such a dense area. Part of the runway has been taken away to the east and put in with Northern Hills, which houses many structures. How as planners and community leaders, can you consciously evaluate the sincerity of the applicant to comply with the safety violations? You as a board have tremendous responsibility to enforce zoning laws passed by the city of Omaha to make sure builds and developments are safe and in compliance. I ask once again, where is the final plan rendering you are to vote on? This plan is not compliant with sufficient information. It's like a student turning in an incomplete term paper expecting a full grade. I still don't know what the full plan is. I don't see it in what I received in emails. There is no detail in the plan, there is still safety violations, along with the two additional violations. Why is there Aviator Hotel still marked? Is there a venue, or is there no venue? What is the additional square feet in the buildings? There's no markings, there's no identification. Why is there no detail? Anyone submitting a plan includes detail for the ability to make planning decisions. So what is the business plan? Every project must have an organized, detailed, systematic approach to attain sustainable growth. What is the purpose of this incomplete information lacking plan? We've come from leisure, drink, fly, massage, eat concept that, by the way, no one ever agreed who had access to. Now we're housing large hangars along with small hangars. Why are people flying here? What is the point? Is it still the same as it was a year ago? I don't know. Why are we here to talk about incomplete plans that lack detail and had forty-five safety violations against it and now have added more? The additional five buildings that are being added are spaced apart. They are one-third of the length of the entire runway. Having monolithic structure, blocks and funnels, wind between buildings, causing inconsistent crosswinds. One-third of the runway is these buildings. Again, is there a designer, anyone who has any aviation experience involved? Why wouldn't the applicant suggest the FAA take a look at the plans for safety, or the aeronautical board? That's what I would do. Why is the applicant adding more safety violations to become even more noncompliant than the FAA guys? Exhibit B two, homes built in violation, and the five, as hangars mentioned above, are even closer to the runway than the homes the FAA tagged. So why are we violating more space yet once again? If the FAA won't put their stamp of approval on this, how can we? Please look at B two, Lampre Neerson was tagged by the Nebraska Department of Aeronautics for being too close to the runway. We, I believe, as a consensus, want the airport to succeed. It has been unkempt and little flight activity for years. We have to realize what it is. It is a small airport. We moved there, we like aircraft, but again, it should be used for its intention. We're trying to put an elephant into a thimble, and it's not fitting. We're adding more safety violations on top. There are houses now wrapped all the way around the airport. To me, that's extremely safety situation. With this point taken, to succeed, there must be a sustainable plan for safety and common sense growth. I'm speaking for a larger collective group who cannot continue to take time off of work, but have sent many emails embracing my above rhetoric. Lastly, we all know development is the future. We're all for development, we're all for betterment. Please note, though, the city's residential master plan, which is exhibit C, and the city's residential master plan in exhibit C specifically states that entire area has been zoned for low-density residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none, up. Okay.
Andrew Collins, Erickson Cedars from Law Firm, on behalf of Irvington Volunteer Fire Department, along with a representative of the department as well. The department in opposition to the application would echo the safety, environmental, and other concerns that have been enunciated today by the other opponents to the application. As was discussed at the pre-meeting, the, the more pressing concern, or one of many pressing concerns as far as the department is concerned, is the concept of the RPZ. Mr. Ackerman stood up here and represented to the board that the RPZ, which stands for Runway Protection Zone, won't be moved as a result of the project as proposed. The department regards that as helpful information, but incomplete at best, because as I understand it, and although I'm not necessarily the, the world's foremost expert on it, my understanding is that the RPZ is set by the location of the threshold. And I don't have any clarity, and I don't believe the board has clarity, on what would be required of the applicant to ultimately move the threshold and thus move the RPZ at a later date, and whether that would be within this board's jurisdiction, or the FAA, or someone else, or some other board. This board has the responsibility to weigh and coordinate the effect of granting this application on the surrounding parcels. The surrounding parcels are impacted by the location of that RPZ as to their value and their ability to use their parcels. So I would request that if the, if the board is inclined to pass or pass with conditions or, or otherwise approve this plan, that a condition be added, requiring that the applicant agree that the, that, that no action will be taken with the FAA or otherwise that would move the RPZ or otherwise impact the neighboring parcels or the available uses of the neighboring parcels.
Andrew, would you give us your address? I didn't hear that at the beginning.
I apologize, I don't think I gave it. One zero three three zero Regency Parkway Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Sir, are you coming down? Okay.
Getting out of the way.
All right. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I close public hearing. Patrick, did you want to come up? Doug, I don't know. Give, give you a chance to, Doug says no, I don't.
That's, that's no problem, yeah. You know, I, you know, as I hear the, oh, sorry. Yep, sorry. Pat Ackerman, owner of North Omaha Airport, one one nine oh one North Seventy Second Street. You know, as I hear the opponents, you know, we are very focused on safety. Like, that's part of the reason why we've done the extensive work with FAA, to get the analysis back, to give to the city, and to get verification from their consultant, because we believe it to be very important. And the thousand-foot buffer that was mentioned earlier, that is for precision instrument approach airports. That is not North Omaha Airport. North Omaha Airport is a visual-only airport, size A1 small aircraft. That's all it will ever be. And so to use that against the project, I think is equitable, because it's not what the airport is. You know, there was a comment I made about, you know, keeping it small. This plan keeps the airport small and keeps it functioning longer term. Couple of mentions here, there were some, some rumors around, in terms of FAA and targeting certain houses. We've, we've looked at every structure, every tree around the entire airport, and those have been given over to the city. Those houses have not been seen as hazardous to aviation. So I wanted to dispel the incorrect information that was, that was shared earlier. We're not increasing traffic, we're trying to keep it sustainable. And again, the safety violations Eric's very well aware of, our concerns of things that are in and around the airport, which is why we took a year to come back to you guys and with the detailed work we've done. So keeps it small, keep it focused on recreational aviation, and I think this is the best plan for the North Omaha Airport and keeping it functioning longer term, so.
Patrick, have you, have you had discussions with FAA and Nebraska Department of Transportation?
I've talked to both of those committees. The, the Nebraska, when we talked about going back to public, that was the summer, we had a conversation around that. FAA, we've had numerous conversations over the past, geez, six months. We submitted our initial findings to them, I think it was in March second, and we spent most of the summer working with them, and they're well aware of what we're doing, so.
So they've seen the plans?
We submitted all, everything to, yes. Now, again, Nebraska's different, because we're not a public-use airport, so they don't have any jurisdiction over private-use airports, but I have had conversations with them in terms of what I'm trying to do. And again, these are hangars, zone-compliant, compliant hangars, so.
Patrick, you, you just stated that, that you clarified the, what the interference in the RTZ zone was. How did you go about doing that, verify that?
Can you say that again? I'm sure if I understood what you said.
You, you just said that you assured us that there were no violations of that, of the new, new structure, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah. There's no new isolations of the, per everything we've done, and I told Eric from the start and our engineering team, there should be no new violations with these new, these new buildings, so.
So you, you surveyed that in order to?
We worked with TD two to, to do that work, and if Lampre Neerson sees issues with it, we'll work with them to rectify anything that we have. We're not here to introduce new violations into the airport.
And, you know, Andrew had mentioned that, in his testimony, that your, your testimony earlier about the RPZ was incomplete, and, and he was looking for something that might say that the RPZ won't be moved in the future?
Yeah, I stated that earlier on the public, I don't know what else people are looking for. It's not being moved, it can't be moved. And I explained, and I explained, Andrew, as well, their structures with the firehouse prevents it from being moved anyways, because this right butts to the end of that RPZ zone, it couldn't be moved even if it wanted to be. So this, this is the reality of it. I'm not sure what else he's looking for, I guess, so. Just wanted to clarify that. Yep.
Pat, could you, I know Kathy had talked about, you know, the lack of a plan, can you, for the record and the benefit of the audience, just touch on the use of the hangars or how you envision that, who, who will use these, or can you just elaborate on that?
Sure, yeah, I mean, it could be any number of people. That's why it's being pretty vague, is because it could be a new AMP shop, it could be a flight school, it could be an individual that's looking to have a private hangar and has a couple planes. I mean, there's a lot of different uses with, with this, and that's why they're being built and or shown the way that they are. So I think it serves a different, different groups of needs, so I'm not going to tell you exactly who it's going to be, because it might, it might change, so.
Your box hangars that, your box hangars, they're going to have restrooms in them, maybe even a little bed or something, but that's not for living.
Correct.
It's just for, if somebody's flying in over, coming in and out of the area, needs to spend the night, they can spend the night and move on.
That's correct, yep. Every hangar will have a bathroom, and they may have a conference room in there, they might have offices. I mean, that exists today at the airport. I mean, that's not new to the airport, so, and that's how it's being used today in several structures, so.
Were you going to say something, Eric? I didn't mean to cut you off. Any other questions for Pat?
Just make one comment, just, I think Kathy was talking about final plans, but that's from the, that happens later, on, on building permit, right?
Building permits, yeah, exactly. And we, you know, and they're built over five different buildings, and so every building might be just a little bit different, depending on what the need is, right? Hoping to attract some businesses, some individuals, and so we'll see what the market fit is, but they're hangars, they're hangars as they exist today, and not every hangar's built the same, so, shown as a box for a reason, so. So shown as a box for a reason, so.
And your plan is to phase these, and you're not going to build everything all at once. You're going to see how each one is absorbed, move on to the next one.
Correct, yep. It's, incremental development will happen at the airport over a period of time, yep.
Any additional comments, questions? Do you feel that Pat answered everything?
Well, I guess just one side comment. A lot of comments about the, you know, the septic system and notes about the hotel, about the other structures that are no longer part of it. Just reiterate, if you would, that those are not part of it.
Yeah, they're, it's not meant to be a disguise or anything. TD2 has already resubmitted the plan, removing that language. That was an error, so that was removed. It's not meant to be hotel entertainment. I don't know how many times I have to say it. I get it, but it's not what it's meant to be, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Pat? Pat? As I said upstairs in the pre-meeting, I wished you would have had another public meeting with all the neighbors, so a lot of this could have been discussed with that. Would there be a problem having a future public meeting with the neighbors as you go through this process?
I'm happy to be engaged with the neighbors. I would say there is several neighbors that, regardless of what I say, it won't matter, right? We've kind of, we've thinned everything down to be, to solve a lot of the needs, but some people just don't want an airport there. So I'm happy to continue to dialogue with people. You know, I would just say we met with them twice last year, a couple of different times. I just don't see there was any other need to meet with them, because we weren't going to solve any additional things. This is kind of the plan, and we think it's the best plan, so.
Well, just that a lot of people didn't know that you'd taken the hotels out and that sort of, and the bar and the entertainment.
Sure. It's been over two years now, so, yep.
How long, how old, you know how old that airport is?
Seventy-seven years old.
And these houses are fairly newly built, right?
Yeah, correct.
In the last ten, fifteen years?
Correct, yep. So people that are around the airport, I mean, they decided to live by an airport, just to be clear, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, did you want to add anything? Well, we closed the public hearing. I closed the public hearing, sir. Just a second, sir. Did you just come down just today, just for this?
Yeah.
Do you have, if you came all the way down here, I'm going to, I'll open it up just for you to make a comment, if you can keep it short, please.
Yep. My name is Robert Stewart. I live at 12621 North Seventy-Second Street. And on this map that they sent out, it shows some new easements, utility easements. And one of them is right off of property. And I was kind of curious to know what that, more details on that is all.
Okay, you have the map with you?
Yeah.
If you want to bring it. Pat, do you know anything about this?
They may be able to explain a little better.
Doug might know something about it.
Like, there's an easement right there. It comes from Seventy-Second Street toward the runway. And it wasn't, I've never seen it show on any other map we've seen.
It's an existing waterline easement.
Existing waterline easement?
Yeah, there are all of these hatches indicate, so there must be a waterline running in here.
I'll tell you what, to keep things moving, if you guys want to take your discussion.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And Robert, Robert, if you've got any questions, you can talk to Doug for, okay.
Sure, thanks.
All right. Public meeting is closed. Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, a pretty extensive report. A lot has changed, of course, since the previous layover back in February. So there have been quite a few changes. I don't, you know, we spent a lot of time in the pre-meeting talking about all of this. I can say that the applicant has gone through an extensive study and coordination with the FAA and provided updated and new information regarding violations, and which of those are hazardous to aviation, which are no hazard. So, once the city received those, we have been in consultation with our consultants, which is Verge on his group at Lampard Neerson. So those efforts of verification of those violations are ongoing and current. I can also say that it is the desire of the City of Omaha to also enter in a contract with Lampard Neerson to modify the City of Omaha zoning codes to match the requirements of the FAA. So that will be a future item. I think that's important. You know, after a lot of dialogue and conversation, you know, why should Omaha have a more restrictive, more complicated, convoluted code than what the FAA, which is a, you know, national government agency who are experts in the matter? So that'll be ongoing. Obviously, that is not on this agenda, and, but I would say it would be coming in, you know, I don't know if it's a few months or what the timeframe for that is, but that will, I believe, simplify matters as it relates to conversations about state requirements, FAA requirements, as well as the City of Omaha zoning requirements. So we have conversations in language relating to those violations, and those efforts are ongoing. As far as other items, yes, there was one specific error that was called out, and I know the applicant has already modified plans to remove mention of that. I don't think I have anything further to add, so I don't know if the board has questions or discussion, or if you'd like to read, you know, my recommendation or city's recommendation.
Mike, did you have a question?
Well, just in our pre-meeting, we had a question with regards to Item Number Six.
Yeah. Yeah, so obviously, there was conversations, I stayed with the board talking about other cases, so I guess I would first look to Planning Director Dave Fanslaw to elaborate further on the violations, or also potentially Law Department, or we do have our consultant as well.
I think I'll, well, I don't know what the question is, but I'll just briefly touch on me and PJ, and Jen Taylor had a conversation. And I believe Jen's recommenda, so it all, our conversation at the pre-meeting revolved around number six, the condition number six. And unless something's changed since the last time I talked to Jen, she's right here, her recommendation was not for staff or the board to change that condition. And I'll let her elaborate.
And Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department, the concern is that, one, I don't think this board has the authority or should be attempting to waive things that are FAA regulations. So to the extent that even there are off-site regulations that violate FAA, I don't think that we can do that. So my recommendation would be to leave Condition Six as-is and let the Planning Department work with the property owner to address the off-site violations, either through waivers with the Zoning Board of Appeals or otherwise with the FAA, and not at this juncture.
Any comment, Mike, or?
No, no. The only thing I would say is, you know, I always hate to see something interfere with progress, obviously. And to keep things moving forward, I think it's incumbent on all the parties to make sure that they continue to have dialogue and discuss what's needed and to try and rectify and clear up all the violations.
So, yeah, Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director. Well, Mike, we agree with, I agree with you. As airport owner continues to work with us through our processes and the FAA through their process, you know, if construction, if the hangers, say this is approved, and he moves forward with a plan to build those hangers, if there's still violations hanging out there, those off-site violations that could be in violation of our current code or new code that aligns with the FAA, if those, at some point, he's taking a risk by building those structures as he continues, as he continues to work through those violations. So we did talk about that. I'm not sure what you were asking, but we did have that conversation as well.
But he can continue to operate as-is?
He can, so typically, I mean, he's operating as a private airport now.
Right.
This is all, I believe, for him to make the North Omaha Airport a public airport. There are, as we know, there are current violations. We have always taken the stance that as long as an operator is working towards rectifying any violations, yes, they can continue to operate as they work through those. Should, could there be a timeframe put on? There could be, but we have always, since I've been around, I've been around a long time, as long as an applicant is working with the department to clear up any violations, make an application, go through our process, then we've been fine with that.
And just to be clear, these violations have been in existence for a period of time?
Yeah, I don't know, a period of time, I can't tell you how long, though.
But prior to the current owner?
I would imagine.
Well, yes, and that's part of the reasoning of the loss of the public-use airport from, to the current private-use airport was due to violations.
Violations, okay.
Okay.
And I guess just to paraphrase that, just the dilemma that we found, and the reason we had so much discussion about it for general public here is that, that a lot of these violations, the applicant's is working diligently to remove the applications he has power to control. But there are other violations that are involved that are on off-site, meaning other properties that he has no control over. And that's where our dilemma, our concerns are.
So you can continue conversation, I guess. Let me read the city's recommendation report. You know, I guess one item that I wanted to mention as well, the conversation about moving the RPZ or anything. Obviously, you heard the city's consultant in the pre-meeting agree with the assessment by the applicant that that cannot be moved due to the existing fire station located north of the airport. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from DR and AV to AV. Approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow aviation services in the AV district, and approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District subject to the 12 conditions in the recommendation report.
Any additional comments, questions?
Yeah, just make another comment. You know, we've been working with this for over a year, I think, probably, probably since you started owning it, Patrick. And, you know, initially, and I've said this, I think, before, I thought it was kind of a flawed concept because of the entertainment, but you've taken care of that, and you've done a lot of modifications to this. That makes it very workable. And I think that's a testament to you listening, not only to us, but to the neighbors as well at that time, because they were in opposition to the entertainment venue of it. So, you know, I think, I think it's gone, it's come a long way from its initial iteration, and I appreciate you trying to work through it and make it work for our party. So it's just unfortunate, we've got the violations that are hanging over us right now, but hopefully, we can work together, and you can work together with everybody to get those cleared up and move on with business.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion?
I move for the approval of the rezoning from DR and AV to AV. An approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow aviation services in the AV district, and approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow development in the ED Hill, North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District subject to the following 12 conditions.
Motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris? Kate?
Yes.
Russ Hacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No. I'm going to vote no, because I'm just not, I'm not at ease with the gray area of the off-site violations yet. I'm not against moving forward, but I'm not, I just can't vote for it right now, so. I'd like more information, so. Anyways, no vote.
Approved, five to one.
Okay, agenda item number five. Thank you. Case C3-23-242. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of an amendment to Chapter 55 zoning regarding accessory dwelling units. Fence regulations in the street-side yard, garage regulations in cluster subdivisions, compact car parking, automotive washing, stacking, and retaining wall regulations. Location, City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. And Eric, you're presenting.
Yes, I'm going to come up here, just because I'm going to speak a little bit longer on this. Eric England, Planning Department. So this request before the board is a Chapter 55 code amendment, which is the zoning code of the municipal code. There are six items before you that we are requesting an amendment for. The, I would say, the large item deals with new code language for accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. So just to take a quick step back to give a little context of where we've come, last December, the City Council approved the Housing Affordability Action Plan for the City of Omaha. This was a desperately needed housing plan that we developed, led by the Planning Department, involving all city departments and other staff. We had brought on a consultant, and this was a result of certain state law and requirements, LB866, as well as Omaha's need for a further in-depth look at housing. So, not to get into too many details of the HAP, which is the abbreviation, but that identified five goals, along with 29 supporting strategies for housing. Those five goals were to increase the types of housing to meet current and future needs, preserve existing affordable units, ensure all parts of the city have affordable housing, foster housing innovation to lower costs, and advance housing stability. Now, obviously, there were, within those 29 supporting strategies, there's a lot of potential ideas, kind of a menu of a list that Omaha could take on. And so, in order to implement this rather extensive housing document, the city has, since the start of the year, has basically three interconnected teams, which includes a steering committee, which includes the upper management of the Planning Department, as well as representation from the mayor's office, and then work groups, which includes internal city staff, and then advisory committees, which includes multiple members from the community, whether it's developers, architects, nonprofit groups, a wide range of people that deal with housing. So there were four advisory groups that were, that were established and have been meeting. Out of the five goals, two of the goals were grouped into one category. So there's been at least three advisory meetings for each of these, these four groups. And the group that I lead, as well as one of the others, have extensively been looking at accessory dwelling units as a potential zoning code change. It was really viewed early on that this could be a good change that our, that City of Omaha could take, and what other cities have done to open up and to allow more housing, both as an affordable option, but also just to increase the housing stock. Accessory dwelling units are a great housing option for a number of reasons. To create new housing units while respecting the look and scale of an existing neighborhood, support efficient use of existing housing stock and infrastructure, provide housing that responds to changing family needs, smaller households, and increasing housing costs, provide accessible housing for seniors and persons with disabilities, and offer environmentally friendly housing choices with less average space per person and smaller associated carbon footprints. So there are current rules and regulations in place in the zoning code that kind of dip into this category. One's an accessory apartment that is rather difficult and a tricky process to do, so it has not been utilized very frequently, especially during my career here at the city. There is an accessory dwelling unit code in place for areas that are designated for TOD zoning that we added to code back in 2020. And then there is the two-family residential, which is allowed in our higher-density residential districts that basically allows two homes. So it's very similar to an ADU, but there are large setback requirements and large lot-size requirements. So in providing this new code, this accessory dwelling units would be available for any property that's zoned residential, as well as other districts that do allow residential housing types. In the higher-density districts, so that is typically R5 through R8, or the MBD or CBD zoning, an ADU would be allowed, would be permitted, whereas the lower-density residential districts, R1 through R4, that typically allow only single-family development, that would require a conditional use permit or approval by this board here. Along with that change, and where you could utilize, the code addresses multiple regulations for this housing type. It's not limited to, but a few of the highlights are no more than one ADU allowed per site. The ADU cannot be sold off separately from the primary residence. It establishes height and setback requirements. It addresses maximum building and impervious coverage. It addresses maximum building and impervious coverages. There are no additional parking requirements, and there is an exemption to the site or per-unit density calculation. I do want to mention, because it is a real factor in other cities that have utilized this code, is that if there are existing neighborhood or homeowners' association covenants that are strictly for that neighborhood, that can prohibit these uses, even though, you know, the zoning code may allow it, whether it's permitted or by a conditional use permit, if there are active covenants that do not, you know, those are not party to the City of Omaha, those are private agreements for those neighborhoods, that can prohibit accessory dwelling units, and I know that's a real issue with other cities, and that is what it is. So along with the ADUs, there are five other items in the code, which I'll just touch on briefly. One is with compact car parking, a small change into the percentage that's allowed or the groupings. We are taking out the car wash stacking requirements from the zoning code, because we already have regulations in place with Public Works documentation regarding access, stacking, and driveways. So the current zoning code has been in conflict with that, so just like we do with other uses that have drive-throughs, whether it's a bank or a restaurant, we will defer to that Public Works documentation. There are some setback regulation, modification for cluster subdivisions and setbacks. Retaining walls within the Urban Design Code, some clarification of how retaining walls are utilized. And then the last one deals with fences located on corner lots. We are modifying a six-foot-high fence that is 50% open. It's typically had to meet that street-side yard setback, which is typically about between 15 and 20 feet. This code change would allow that to go up to the property line, provided that it's at least 50% open. So, you know, either a picket fence, or a wrought iron, wrought iron-type fence that has openings that you can see through. There's several other cities and jurisdictions that we studied that have done that. And I just wanted to point out that zoning board appeals, this item is a frequent request. Over the past two years, there have been approximately 50 zoning board appeals waivers requested to allow a six-foot fence in that, up to the property line or within that area previously restricted, and all but one have been approved. So I will take my seat and answer any other questions, but I do want to point out, included in your packet is letters of support from at least six organizations. I know a few of those are here, I don't know if they plan on speaking, but I will list them. It's AARP of Nebraska, Omaha by Design, Spark, The Home Company, MOBA, and I'm forgetting one more. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Any other proponents?
Lucas Stone, thirty-seven twenty-seven North one hundred and eighth Street. First off, thank you for making this change and making it an early win on our AD requirements. I made a comment on the Housing Affordability Federal Grant, I tried to sneak it the last second. Our E requirements were a mess, I'm glad to see they're being cleaned up. One thing, and this is just sort of a point, I think that city planning should talk with OPPD and MUD to have sort of a document out there defining how ADUs should be metered in the City of Omaha for utilities, because that's a com, that can be a common snag if you're actually going to build one of those things. How does, it's not well-defined. If you look at, like, an OPPD's and MUD's manuals, they don't talk about it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents?
Hello, my name is Todd Stubendeck. I'm the State Director of AARP Nebraska, twenty-three thirty-nine South one eighty-third Circle. I submitted a more detailed letter, so I'll be brief in my comments here today. AARP supports this, and has been pleased to work with the city on a number of ADU housing initiatives this year. For us, we know that our members want to stay in their homes at the lowest level of care as long as possible. ADUs represent a age-friendly, family-friendly option for folks. It could be a place where an older couple has a family member staying, or a caregiver staying to help take care of them, or it could be reversed. A family could build an ADU to house an older relative and be able to take care of them, so they're able to stay at home for as long as possible. We don't have any illusions that ADUs will solve our housing shortage here in Omaha, but again, like I said, they represent a family-friendly, age-friendly solution to, to a lot of folks, and we've seen them around the country really work as a solution for folks. The two initiatives we've worked with is we've granted a community challenge, an AARP Community Challenge Grant to the Planning Department to do an education and outreach campaign on ADUs. We hope that this change in the zoning code will be something that we can work with on, on using that grant to help publicize, so people are aware of it. We also just recently completed an ADU for you design competition, in which we had a, just an amazing outpouring of, of support. We had over twenty professional designs entered for this ADU contest that focused on age-friendly designs. As a part of that contest, we picked three winners and one honorable mention. Our goal for that competition was to increase awareness, once again, of ADUs, and to build, get buildable, you know, professional-level ADU designs for the City of Omaha, and I think we've accomplished both goals. So again, I appreciate the Planning Department's work on this and support the amendment. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, and close public hearing? Any additional comments, questions from the board? I, I have a comment, and I realize I'm probably gonna look pretty stupid here, but I'm good at that. I do have some reservations on this, and I realize this is what's coming across the country, you know, for infill, for, as our population grows older and having, you know, accessory dwelling units in the backyard for all that. Realize it, it's coming, and it's gonna happen, and I want to thank the Planning Department and all the committees, public committees that got together and, and worked on this. You did a nice job. I guess my reservation is, is that sometimes there's gonna be people that they buy a home and, hey, the area's single-family dwellings, and I thought I had a private backyard, and now next door I got a house. Or it pits, might pit neighbor against neighbor. Hey, I thought we had a single-family dwelling area, and you wanna put another house in the backyard. Well, that's against the covenants. Well, sue, sue me if you wanna move forward. So it's just, just a comment, but it's just, there's reservations that I have about this moving forward, and, you know, I see it even in my own neighborhood, where a little different, where we have a guy who wants to do a lot split, which is against covenants, but it's pitted neighbor against neighbor. And like I said, a little different than, than ADU, but anyways, that's my reservation, so. Eric?
I just have a question. Is the concept, the design concept, are we recommending that most of these units be ADA accessible?
There is nothing specifically in the code that would require ADA accessibility. Part of the discussion this morning is, is obviously, you know, AARP has that interest, and one of the criteria of theirs was universal design and accessibility, so that was definitely a factor with, you know, the, the group of aging Americans that they serve, but there is, there is not a requirement, just like a single-family home, there'd be no requirement. So the code does not touch on that. Of course, we think it's a great option to, to utilize that, but, you know, ADUs, I didn't, I didn't touch on it, but they can come in all forms and shapes. We, it could be a detached unit, which is traditionally what you think of in the backyard. It could also be attached to your existing residence, or it could be an internal unit, which would usually be space in the basement or an attic. So obviously, there's, there's a lot of variation there of, of what you could do, and, and not all of those would be handicap accessible, you know, very easily, so.
They could make them handicap accessible.
They could, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Eric, were you gonna add anything?
Yeah, you know, I guess I would just add, you know, we did notify all the registered neighborhood associations with any zoning code change, we do that, and so that's over 200 neighborhood associations, and we've heard back from a few of them, and we'll answer any questions for people that have questions or need clarification, and obviously, as this moves forward to City Council. So staff recommends approval.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please, record the vote.
Kate?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No, for the reservations that I've stated, so.
Approved, five to one.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number six, case C three dash twenty-three dash two seventy-five. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Walter Apartments TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, eight oh seven South Fiftieth Street, and Don, you're up.
Oh, yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. Got just a moment here to get the map up. This is the Walter Apartments Project, tax increment financing project. Zoom out a little. Let's see, Bakers on Saddle Creek, this is the project site at Fiftieth and Leavenworth. The site looks like this today. It's kind of a visually blighted site, with a vacant former self-serve laundromat on the site. The site will be cleared. A new five-story apartment building with 58 market rate apartment units will be constructed. The building will have four levels of apartments, on top of one level of parking, about 44 parking spaces within the building, another three or four on the street. Developer Parkway Development Company, LLC, it's managed by Ryan Spellman. This project represents an investment of about 16 million dollars in the area. They are requesting 1,938,647,647 dollars in TIF support. Project complies with our master plan, meets the criteria of our TIF program, and we ask for your approval.
Thanks, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, Ryan Spellman, nine nine five one, Harney Parkway North, Parkway Development Company. I'm the developer of the project. I appreciate Don's introduction and thorough run-through, and I'm also very excited to take this very blighted and substandard property and, and make something much better out of it. So I'm here to answer your questions, appreciate your consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close public hearing? Additional comments, questions?
Is that one question? The laundry mat that was there, that was not a dry cleaning facility, right?
It was not, no. And I know that-
Phase one or phase two issues?
That's correct, and I know that question came up at the TOD zoning planning board meeting last month. I apologize, I was unable to be there. We do have a clean phase one. It was not a laundromat, which is where you typically have those issues that arise. It was just a typical self-serve laundromat, so. Oh, excuse me, it was not a dry cleaning facility, it was just a typical laundromat. So we're good to go there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Eric, did you wanna add?
Yeah, no, so obviously, last month, you saw the, the zoning and the PUR that was associated with it. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Agenda item number seven, case C three dash seventeen dash two oh eight. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of an amendment to the Atlas TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, sixteen oh nine Benny and twenty-nine twenty-two North Sixteenth Street. You're up, Don.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. This is the Atlas slash Alice Apartments TIF project. It's an amendment to the project. The project was initially approved in 2017. It was a project that involved the rehabilitation of two buildings. The building at the west end of the site has been completed, that's this one here. It's now occupied, it's now been rehabbed with five apartment units. The request for the amendment for the second building, this corner commercial building, its rehab was approved to be used for one tenant space, basically an office bay, one, one commercial bay. The applicant wishes to amend his TIF project plan to allow the building to instead be rehabilitated for four residential apartments. The applicant is, and developer is Lawrence Butler, he's here with us this afternoon. The project meets our TIF program criteria, and we ask for your approval.
Yeah, thank you, Don.
Good afternoon, Lawrence Butler, forty-eight oh nine Northwest Radio Highway. Just to give a little bit further clarification, this building will be for affordable housing units, in addition to the other project that's adjacent to it. And I'm also here to answer any questions that you may have about it. Say that again?
How big are the units gonna be?
Um, we're looking at about 1,100 square foot per unit.
How many bedrooms?
Um, we're looking at one four-bedroom, one two-one-bedrooms, and a two-bedroom. I guess one other thing is, these are historic buildings, they're currently locally landmarked, they're on the National Register of Historic Places, so there are historic restrictions that we have to abide by with it, too.
I'm just curious, how are you making the units affordable?
Um, with, I guess with the Alice Apartments, those were awarded a NIFA allocation, nine percent. This building will be in partnership with the City of Omaha Rental Rehab Program, also with the State Historic Program, and we've gotten the cost to where we can make units affordable.
Any other questions for Lawrence? Thank you, Lawrence. Any other proponents?
I'd like to thank Mr. Lawrence here for being willing to go down and reinvest in some of these older neighborhoods.
Need your name and address.
Sorry, Lucas Stone again, three seven two seven North one hundred and eighth Street, got a little excited. I'd like to thank Mr. Lawrence back here for going down, being willing to put in the work, reinvest in some of these older neighborhoods, that while depopulation and over the years with the suburbanization of Omaha, and it's heartening to see that people, and people are coming back, that it's gonna feed into other developments in the area, the Twenty-Four Street orbit work that's being done, so on and so forth, and gonna become a place again. And ha, and without close.
Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Good evening, Don Curry, thirty-three twenty-four North Twenty-Fourth Street. And I just want to thank him as well, I'm a fellow developer off of that Sixteenth Street corridor, so it feels good to see someone else sees the same vision that I do down there as well, so.
Thanks, Don. Any other proponents? Come on down, sir.
Yeah, my name is Bradley Jones, I'm sixteen twenty-three Spencer, sixteen twenty-nine Spencer. I also want to say thank you. That's it.
Any other proponents? Gonna say thank you?
Yes, thank you, sir. David Saunders of sixteen nineteen Spencer Street, and also it's a, that's an upgrade to the neighborhood, so, thank you.
You bet. Any others?
Cheryl Weston, eighteen twenty-two Emmett Street, and I don't know if I say thank you, but I'm glad to see this continued improvement into our neighborhood. I live right there, and I see that, and I'm glad, too, also, that he's using some of the historical, because there's a lot of historical buildings in our neighborhood, and that some of that's going to be maintained, so I wish you the greatest support, and continue to put this type of housing into our neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Lawrence, I don't think you're gonna have any trouble leasing these units.
Did we catch, did we catch all the proponents? Okay? Do we have any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing? Additional comments, questions? You wanna add anything, Eric?
No, I just, obviously, you know, Lawrence has taken on a few difficult projects, so we, you know, we always appreciate working with him, and, you know, like to see success for, you know, smaller developers, and we're excited about this project, so staff recommends- So, um, staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin? Moore? Morris? Pete? Rose Sacker? Mr. Chair? Approved six to zero.
Gen item number eight case C three dash eighteen dash ten applicant planning department on behalf of the city of Omaha. Request approval of an amendment to the Moxie Hotel TIF redevelopment project plan. Location four oh nine South Twelfth Street and Bridget, you're up.
Try something different because I forgot to bring an aerial. Bridget Hadley, City of Omaha Planning Department. Um, so this is for the Moxie Hotel, and as you can see on this, on your screen, this is Thirteenth Street, the Gene Leahy Mall. Thirteenth and then Harney, and so the blue shaded area is the Moxie Hotel. And this is a TIF project that was approved in twenty eighteen. So this amendment is to, um, to an existing project, and it is to incorporate the, an enhanced employment, uh, area designation and the use of general business occupation taxes, um, in this particular project. Now I'll give you a nice aerial. So this hotel actually opened in October of this year. Originally approved in twenty eighteen, as I said, a six-story, a hundred and five ho- room hotel, it's a Marriott flag. Um, it's on the site of the former diner that some people may remember, um, in the old market. Um, and now that it's finished, they have a hundred and ten rooms instead of a hundred and five. This particular project did experience some construction delays. Um, it was delayed about, uh, one to two years originally to allow the former diner to continue its operations. And then about the time they were beginning, ready to start twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, of course, we went into the pandemic. And there were a lot of, a lot of reasons for construction delays in, in many projects. Of course, construction material costs were increasing around that time and have, uh, still been high. But there were, of course, supply chain issues and then labor shortages and so on and so forth. Um, so the project experienced quite a few, uh, delays, but it also experienced quite a few, uh, a lot of cost overruns. And consequently, because of these cost overruns, the owner is, is seeking additional funding. Original project costs were around fifteen million and now they're about twenty-three million, so eight million dollar shortage. Um, and as was talked about at the pre, uh, planning board meeting, um, the application has been sent to Mike and PJ, and I know they'll get that to you. But the costs, um, the EEA financing is about one point six, a little over one point six million. And those eligible costs are for site work and for A and E, which are above the TIF eligible cost. So they're not, um, duplicating, these are additional costs. So you'll see that when you get the application. Um, the project owner, as I said, they're seeking an EEA designation for the use of the GBOT taxes, um, which will yield, um, more funding to the project than us increasing the TIF. So you may wonder why didn't they ask for an increase in TIF? Well, this is gonna yield more. The Community Development Law does require that a request for an EEA designation be included in a redevelopment plan. Since this is a TIF project and it was already approved, we had to go back and amend the original TIF redevelopment project plan to include this request. So, um, that is what we're doing today, that will satisfy the law, the Community Development Law. And, uh, the EEA committee has already approved this. They met in September and they've approved this request. And I think another question was, um, how long the GBOT taxes are, and it's gonna be about twenty-five years, a twenty-five-year amortization is what's in the application. It's, it's stated as a twenty-five-year amortization for those taxes. I believe it's our city finance department. I don't, I'll look to Jennifer maybe to clarify that, but I also know Michael Sands, who represents, the owner is here, and whatever I can't answer, or if Jennifer doesn't answer, he can certainly answer.
Okay, thanks, Bridget.
So, you're welcome. So, um, there are no other changes to this project, no other changes to the project scope, so with that, I would ask for your approval.
But not that familiar with how the EEA works. Can that be applied for at any time, or is there a specific, I assume this is already open, right?
Yes.
The hotel? Can it be applied for at any time?
Well, it would seem so. Now, that question I would certainly leave to Jennifer to answer, but typically we try to catch these, of course, um, when we have a TIF project. If it's going to be with, coupled with a TIF project, we, it's usually caught at that time or around the time we're going through that approval process. But again, with this project, um, struggling as it was, having been approved in twenty eighteen and just now opening and trying to find ways to help reduce their costs. Now, they, they have, another question was asked is, you know, how are they really covering that eight million dollar shortfall? Well, they have, uh, restructured their financing and they have added quite a bit of owner equity to the project. But of course, they're trying to do whatever they can to help, uh, whittle that down without having to, uh, add all owner equity.
But they've been approved for the EEA?
Correct. By the, the EEA, um, committee. The next step is for us to go to the city council.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Bridget. Any other proponents?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Michael Sands, seventeen hundred Farnham Street, on behalf of the development group. So, and, and Bridget did a great job of, of highlighting, uh, the main points, um, and to, uh, board member Pete's question. I think this is a unique situation, um, in that it was one where obviously we would have liked to do what we're doing now, more on the front end of construction. But it was a situation where those costs just snowballed and snowballed and snowballed, um, to the point where they were, you know, too far in to stop or, you know, pivot. But, you know, it, so, and, and to their credit, and I think is, uh, a huge credit to the city, they've created a great, a, uh, great product. It's, not sure if, if any of you've been down there, it's, it's beautifully done. It's really nice, I think it'll value out at above where they originally estimated for, for the, uh, the, uh, TIF. And, uh, it, it'll also be a huge benefit for the streetcar corridor, obviously. Uh, just not, not only in that product, uh, but in the actual financial benefit that I'll be seeing. There's actually only about ten years left of TIF for this project, so it'll be back on the, uh, the tax rolls sooner than fifteen years. So as far as the EA is concerned, we do realize that the timing for the request is, is a little out of the ordinary. However, you know, it, I think it's a, a good solution, and, and to be sure, it's only a partial solution. They, uh, infused more, you know, about eight million dollars more in equity than, than they wanted to, which they would like to at least get some of that out to convert to debt and reinvest and do all those good things that developers do. Um, but, but it's a way of offsetting some of that where I think there are no real, you know, nobody, nobody is burying the brunt of, of these funds. It's not like TIF where you're deferring, you know, maybe more taxes or for a longer period. It's really just a self-imposed tax, and not only that, um, they're only imposing it on room revenues. Uh, so, you know, the end consumer who that, who will be paying that tax are not, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time gonna be Omaha residents. They'll be out of town folks, um, who are, are just happy to be at the hotel and stay there and, and, uh, shouldn't be a burden on, on anybody local, um, or hurt the business at all. So I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you have and, and respectfully ask for your support.
Does this have a restaurant in it?
It has a bar, I'm not sure if, whether it, I, I do not believe it will ever have a full-service restaurant in it.
So the bar though, so the bar patrons won't be
Correct.
Exposed to the, to the tax?
Correct.
Any other questions, Michael? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing? Any additional comments, questions?
I want to follow up with Jen on that, timing of that. Stated, uh, length of time that that tax is, is on, or is it until it's paid back? Does it sunset? Who keeps track of it?
Uh, Bridget, uh, Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department, Ms. Hadley is correct, City Finance Department keeps track of that. Uh, we have two different sunset options when it relates to enhanced employment area and general business occupation tax programs under the Community Development Law. When those programs are implemented for projects outside of a community redevelopment area, then the state law requires an automatic term of twenty years. If those programs are implemented for projects inside of a community redevelopment area, the state law does not obligate or require any specific term. So the, um, the tax will cease when the bond or the note that's associated with the agreement in the project is paid in full. Uh, as Bridget said, since we have done an analysis on this that amortizes that note to the term that which she stated, it should term out at that point in time. Uh, but it will continue to pay until that note is paid in full.
Any other comments, questions? Eric, did you want to add anything?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore? Morris? Pete? Rose Sacker? Franklin? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Gen item number fifteen case C eleven dash twenty-three dash two seventy-three applicant Donald Curry. Request approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street. Don, are you presenting? Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Don Curry, the developer representing Talbot the Tenth Group, and we're currently developing a project at thirty-three twenty-four North Sixteenth Street, which was approved by the Department of Planning. We're actually seventy percent of the way through construction as we speak now. And this is actually a, a rendering of what the project will look like upon completion. Uh, we are currently building a affordable housing, and we were financed by Front Porch as well as the Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And with that comes certain stipulations as far as the amount of, uh, rental income that we have to generate in order to sustain the debt on the property, which we met way in advance. We were able to prove that with our performance way in advance of them releasing the funds and us, uh, obviously starting construction. So this is a front view of the property, and I'm showing you this because this is something, this is similarly, similar, similar to what we're going to build on the corner of thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street. So that's the corner of Sixteenth and Spencer. And this lot was zoned R seven, just as thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street has been, or is rather, which means that it's, uh, multifamily. So again, this is a three-unit apartment building, each unit will be twelve hundred square feet with three bedrooms and two baths. So they're nice-sized units, huge, as more architects have stated. Uh, this is currently, and again, I'm showing you this just to give you an idea and a visual as to what we're looking, we're proposing to build on the corner of Sixteenth and Spencer. So this is currently where we are on Sixteenth and Spencer, I mean, Sixteenth and Emmett. So again, um, we are at least seventy percent of the way through this development. So again, brick facade, we're gonna place siding, uh, up here, and then we're gonna put the, uh, the conus, which is the, uh, the crown molding at the top as well. So again, going back to that rendering. And here is a rear view of the property as well, and this is again, Sixteenth and Emmett. And this is currently what it looks like now. So we are on track to do what we said we are going to do, and I wish I would have brought some pictures to show you what we look like on the inside of the building. So here we are, um, today to discuss whether or not we should be allowed to build a second project of a similar look and feel. And I'll also add this as well, like, I'm, I'm a son of Sixteenth Street. I used to catch the school bus across the street from Sixteenth and Emmett. So I'm not some guy that has been away and just came into Omaha and realized, you know, there's, there's gold in these hills, which there is. I really do believe, I believe in North Omaha, I believe in that Sixteenth Street corridor. I have, uh, this lot on Sixteenth and Emmett, I have a lot on Sixteenth and Spencer, I have two lots on Sixteenth and Worth, and also have two lots off of Sixteenth and Burdette. I plan on not complaining about what needs to be done in North Omaha, I'm doing it. And I, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Done. Any other proponents?
Yes, good, good afternoon. My name is Barbara Ingram. Uh, my company name is Rare Bird Innovations. My address is seventy-five seventeen North Eighty-eighth Avenue. I am the project design team, um, project manager, and I'm just wanted to speak more about the project, and it's, it's just been a pleasure working with Don and hearing about his vision. Um, I'm also working with Prohaskan Associates, Wells Resource, um, and, um, RW Engineering. We're actually about ninety-five percent on the contract documents complete on the project, and, um, we received the, um, recommendations regarding the PUR and those items that need to be addressed, and certainly I believe Don is willing to do that and to work through, um, on those items. Just wanted to also add that, um, just wanting to increase the height of the building to thirty-six foot two inches, which is about seven inch, inches higher than what was shown in the PUR. Actually, I'm also a resident of Omaha, Nebraska, born and raised right off of Thirty-Fifth and Parker Street. And frankly, um, I hold a master's in architecture degree from UCLA, attended Iowa State, um, University, have my bachelor's from there. And frankly, um, you know, to see the state of our city, particularly North Omaha, um, the number of blighted areas, um, I am very impressed, certainly with Lawrence's work. I've worked with Lawrence, um, Butler on other projects as well, and I'm very impressed with what Don is trying to do, and not just taking one site but multiple sites. And so I would encourage, um, this board to get behind these, um, small, uh, business developers who are committed to Omaha, not leaving Omaha. That's one thing I did, I'm a, one of nine children in my family, and grateful to be a part of the professional, um, industry here in Omaha, Nebraska. And I want to continue to support small business owners and also to be successful. So I would encourage the board to approve the PUR today. Have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other proponents?
Lucas Stone, Lucas Stone, thirty-seven twenty-seven North Hundred and H Street. I had some suggestions for Mr. Curry here about how to improve the facade, but it sounds like Mr. Curry already is on, on the ball on that. Uh, just, uh, speaking in support and also wanted to point out one FYI sort of caveat with the garage, so it doesn't bite Mr. Curry in the butt when he goes through, when he gets the building. When he gets to the building in fire stage, twenty-five feet, a twenty-five foot by forty-foot garage, well, thirteen R is gonna require delegate thirteen for sprinklers in that garage. And that means for a garage that big, you're gonna have to heat it or use a dry pipe system or an antifreeze system, because the biggest, um, extended coverage dry side walls can only throw water twenty feet. Just wanted to get that out there so you don't get bit by it down the road. And that's all.
Thank you. Any other pro, proponents?
Brad Jones, uh, sixteen twenty-three Spencer.
Just a second. Luca? Go ahead.
When I was born in like nineteen Brad Jones, sixteen twenty-three Spencer. When I was born in like nineteen eighty-one, I stayed across the street from where I'm living at now, and the house that I live in was my grandmother's house, and, um, so I've been in the neighborhood for about forty-plus years, give or take, and like, Don's always known me before I've known him, and And my, like, the house I live in now, my, I got it from my grandma, but they originally purchased it from the Saunders, which are here with Don today. So, basically, what I'm trying to say is, like, we're a family. And to watch Don basically rebuild in the neighborhood is a lovely thing. I don't know why I got this, I was kind of upset to get it, but I had to come down to speak on his behalf because it's, it's love. And like, what he's doing is, it's an awesome thing, and we need more people like Don in the neighborhood. So, thanks, Don, I appreciate it, man, all right?
Thank you, Brian. Any other proponents?
Yes, again, David Saunders of sixteen nineteen Spencer Street. Again, going back to what Sixteenth Street used to look like. My grandmother used to take me up and down Sixteenth Street in the seventies, and I mean, he's trying to get that facial back front looking good again, going up and down Sixteenth Street. Of course, and then my other guy that was here earlier, um, he's doing the same thing. So, to get him moving ahead and try not to have somebody shoot it down, uh, it would be, it would be a great thing to let him to, can continue to upbring, uh, North Omaha again. So, that's it. Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Hi, how are you guys doing?
Good.
My name is Carolyn Foster, one zero zero thirteen Armstrong Plaza. I know Mr. Don Curry. I'm kind of sleepy, I'm sorry, y'all. I'm getting old, and, uh, they threw another five-year-old kid in my house, and I'm tired. She gets up three times a night, but anyway. I just wanted to say, North Omaha is, um, is a real nice place. It started to look kind of downhill, and a lot of people are starting to build over there. Mr. Curry is doing it too, and it looks really nice down there now. And I encourage a lot of people for doing that, because me and my husband is thinking about doing it too, and for him. So, I'm just telling you guys, you know, sometimes people get upset when they see certain things, and they're not used to, you know, building, making it look better. But when, later on, when they look at it, they're going to notice, you know, pay attention, you know, it's just growing. And I, I'm sorry, y'all, I'm just, I'm, I'm exhausted, y'all just don't have no clue. But he's doing, he's doing an excellent job, and I, I drove down there, me and my husband, just looking around. And I'm very proud of him. I appreciate it. Thank you, you guys.
Any other proponents? Okay, seeing none of their any opponents?
Cheryl Weston, eighteen twenty-two Emmett Street. And, um, I'm here today, um, and as I wrote my letter, I am an, an opponent, but I want to make it very clear, it's due to the design and not the project, the ideal of the project. But I also want to give some background, as some of the others have said, about living in North Omaha and particularly this area. I am very, very proud of this young man. At one time, he's not happy with me today. At one time, I used to be Mama Weston, but not now, I don't think, today. He lived across the street, he grew up there, um, I think, I can't remember exactly how long, maybe junior high. He and our son, they became very good friends. They were best man for their wedding, and I have supported him. I have encouraged him when he was buying this property through the land bank. I've encouraged him, and I still want to encourage him. It's just that this particular design, after seeing what it is, the original one that he's working on, on Emmett Street, which... Did I have it right?
There you go. There you go.
All right, there we go. Now, he brought some different pictures today of what it's going to look like. It's not what it looks like now, nor is that what we still want in our neighborhood on the corner of, of Spencer Street. The problem, like I said, is not, it's the design. I want him to be successful. I want him to continue, because he came from the neighborhood and he's coming back into the neighborhood. He's going to live in some of the, one of his projects. This is what we need. We're just asking, and when I say we, people in the neighborhood, we're just asking to have a conversation, which he failed to do, with the neighbors to say, you know, this is what it is. When I saw this original design, when he showed me the drawings, looks fantastic, but it's not coming along to look that, like that now. That is our problem. This house right here will be across the street from what is being built on North, on Sixteenth and Emmett, which he showed you a drawing. That's not how that's looking, and to be seventy percent, that's not true. That's not what it looks like. The people that live here across the street, I've been in the area for fifty-plus years, sixty. Neighbor behind me, Ms. Johnson, has been there for probably seventy years. Other people have been in that area. We want North Omaha to change. We're not afraid of change, but we want to have input into it, and we want it to be so that it fits into the neighborhood design. I looked at your, at the, um, planning board that came out, and one of the first things it was saying was about the property in the area is developed with mixed residential uses. Yes, we're okay with that. Is the land development, it says, intensity of use is similar to the surrounding areas. This is not. That's not similar. That's not acceptable. And it also says on number two, in the height and the scale... Sorry about that. I thought I had a picture of the, uh, property that would be across from there, which shows some houses. We do have tall houses because they're three stories, but they don't look like this. Here's one I was, this is what I was looking for. Those houses in that bottom picture there, those would set across from his project. This is what looks like all the way down that street. His project is going to look like that. That's not what's going to be similar to this, to the residential area. We just want to have it look like that. Here are the, those are the duplexes. And if you look down here to the side, you can see three-story homes right down there, but they're built differently. What we have here is more of a box unit. When you come down Sixteenth Street right now, and I go up my Emmett Street, I almost looked and said the other day, dang, I got a Dino story here. It's just not acceptable. It's nothing against Donald. It's nothing against him. We want to, him to be successful, but we want input.
Cheryl, I, I, I look at those houses, and, and they were built a long time ago.
Yes.
Probably single-family households. This is, this is more of, you know, an apartment, which the cost to build things like that is not, not so affordable anymore, which takes the project possibly out of affordable housing. Now, I, I know that it doesn't look the same, but we, we get into this a lot. Beauty's in the eye of the beholder, and sometimes it just doesn't make eye sense to some people. But when, when somebody's trying to do a project, they try to do the best they can, and maybe you guys could talk about it a little bit, but I don't know that it'll ever look quite like that.
We're not asking it to serve. I don't mean it, but I'm not asking it to look like those other houses. We, we're smart enough to realize things have changed, and we're not going to be able to go back to that because now, because of the land lot, you got to build upward. As I said before, I've been very supportive of him when he showed me those. We understand that. We're just saying, can you do something different? Talk to the people in the community in the area. Can you do something different in the structure of it to make it look more like homes versus just apartment buildings? So, that's what we're, what I'm talking about. There's, I understand fully that with the cost of everything, you, you can't do residential housing. There's no way to do that on those properties, and then make it them affordable, which is what he's trying to do. We're understanding. And as I said, we're not opposed to building, as I said to Mr. Butler. I'm glad that he's doing something with that corner on Sixteenth. I go by where his Atlas building is, and because it was historical and it's in, they were keeping that. That's the same thing. Oh, we're asking, as neighbors, Don, this is second. We already got the one on Emmett Street, not changing. There's nothing you can do about it. We can learn to have to look, but can we have a discussion with you, a dialogue with you to see, is there anything that can be done to make more adjustments? As Ms. Ingram was here, and she said she's working with him, let's have a discussion. What's wrong with having dialogue?
November first, dear neighbor, you're invited to hear about the plans. Did you not receive this?
No, we didn't.
Are you aware of a meeting that happened on November first?
Nope, didn't get that.
So, you've known him since childhood, but you haven't had any discussion around the project with him?
I had discussion, as I said, with him. I saw the renderings of the first project, which is being built on the corner of Sixteenth and Emmett, which is directly from where he was living and up the street from where I lived and lived. That drawing is a different than what we're seeing being built right now and the drawing that he showed today at seventy. There's nothing that can be changed about that. We're willing, we understand that. We're not, all we're asking for is, Don, let's have more little dialogue. Maybe there is something that you can do to help change your design look to fit more and make it look more like the neighborhood or a neighborhood feeling instead of just apartments. We understand that. So, no, we did not get a notice, and one of the problems probably is because we don't have very active neighborhood association meetings, um, and so, or associations, period. But there is, I'm not the only one didn't get one. There's quite a few. I believe Ms. Johnson's here, they received one, but she talked to other neighbors, they did not receive it.
Fortunately, he's here today, so hopefully after the meeting, you two can get together and have your questions.
Well, I don't know if he's still talking to me. I might not be. Not his best friend today.
Thank you.
Cheryl, any other opponents? Cheryl covered a lot of areas, so if you got new information, please.
Bob Edwards, one four seven six Spencer Street. Standing in opposition to the design as is. As for, to answer your question, multi-unit buildings, your board approved this. Oops.
You had it, Bob, and it disappeared on you.
I know, that's life.
There you go.
There you go. Your board approved this, a multi-unit family apartment with traditional gable roofs that fits in with the neighborhood next to the houses right next door to it, three stories tall. A different design aesthetic. It fits into the pure overlay plan requirements that it should fit into the neighborhood character and add value. Those buildings- Yes, it was. Those buildings add values. Those buildings also do something this development doesn't do. On-site parking as required by the statute per unit. This building is using, contends to use as a public street for a private purpose and actually stripe off parking for private use, something the city does not approve, whereas rarely approve. Points on this. This is the current, oops, I am having difficulty with your tech. The applicant is requesting a setback of five feet on the frontage. Code on R seven is thirty-five feet. Applicants requesting a setback of fi, of six feet on the, uh, side street. Code is twenty-one, fifteen to twenty-one feet. Applicants requesting a setback of nine feet on the rear. Code is twenty-five feet. This building is going to cause blind corners. There have already been multiple accidents at intersection over the past seven years, including one fatality on a motorcycle because the person turned out going south and was hit by a car. Another motorcycle, again, same direction, turned out, hit by a car, that person had severe injuries. There's also an issue with the setbacks as per the OPW fifty-three seventy-three Plan Nicholas Street Sewer Extension, currently in phase three. Right now, it's, uh, three blocks away from the site and will continue down the length of Sixteenth Street. The applicant's plan points out that it needs five-foot wide sidewalks. The current plan, as stated, will be seven-foot wide sidewalks, making the setback of the building even closer to the street. The street itself will be narrowing from thirty-six, from sixty feet down to thirty-six feet at the corners, extending thirty feet on each corner with parking, and then expanding out to forty-four feet. On the west side, the seven-foot sidewalk, parking, and a five-foot bike lane. On the east side, five-foot, five-foot sidewalk, eight-foot green belt, and a bike lane, reducing parking in the area. The applicant's contending to take parking away in an area that's already congested. If you've driven down Spencer, and I'm sure you've driven down a street that's similar, you have to bob and weave in order to get down that street. A number of residents have already lost side-view mirrors or had their car scraped because, because people are driving through. Adding dedicated residential parking there shouldn't be an option. Then there's the bioretention pond. Why? It seems like it's being put there for a tax credit, because there are other larger residential projects in town and in the area that don't have them, and it seems to be surplus, a surplus need, redundancy, surplus redundancy. The sewer separation project is passing right by that house. All rainwater that does not soak into the ground will be carried directly to the Missouri River, so why have a bioretention pond which has a number of issues? One, maintenance cost. Most residents don't have them because it costs to maintain that and keep the vegetation down. Two, it's a vector for disease. They become stagnant ponds with mosquitoes that are nuisance and carry disease. So, why have a bioretention pond if it's not just there for a tax credit? It's unnecessary. It doesn't impend on the, it doesn't impend on the setback on the interior property line, but it would cause a problem for other neighbors if it's not properly maintained, and it costs to maintain them. And finally, there's the aesthetics. It just doesn't fit into the area. There are other builders, uh, New Community Development Corp., the local Catholic church. In the last five years, they put in seventy-five units, sorry, in the last seventy, eight years, they put in seventy-five units. I know that because I went and counted. I took pictures of them. I won't bother you to show you, but they're infill development. Each building matches the character of the buildings in the area. There's nothing wrong with development. The area needs to be developed. There needs to be a house or, or a multi-unit structure on that, on that area, and there are ways to do it that are better. I suggest the applicant take a look at, um, one zero seven oh five Brown Street. It is a gabled structure, four units, off-street parking, garage for each unit, driveway for each unit. It would increase his income, it would fit into the lot, it's a similar lot size, and would enhance the area because it's a standard gabled house.
Bob, just a second, Bob. Did you get that, Sydney? Okay, she was just trying to follow where.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Bob.
Well, again, I don't stand in opposition to development. We need smart, considered development that's sustainable. This is a joyless box. You can see the, uh, Mr. Curry, he put up a rendering of what it was supposed to look like. Second story, third story, each bay, three windows in the front. Reality, two, brick frontage going up to the second floor wrapping around. Reality, brick frontage going up to the second floor in the front elevation, but not the rest of the building. A freeze going along the second level floor. Reality, doesn't exist. Trim on the windows, more Federalist style. Reality, doesn't exist. This is bad design. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other opponents?
Hi, my name is Willie Phant, uh, forty-six thirty-six Crestline Drive. Bob, he's my brother. I'm also, we've raised in that area, have brick, uh, some rental property down there, and also, we acquired two or three vacant lots down there, which we will probably develop also, but aesthetics matter in this area. So, I'm not against development. I applaud development. Like I said, we've been in that area since nineteen sixty-two. So, I applaud the development, but it has to be pleasing to the neighbors and make the neighborhood look proper and not just a box, because Mr. Rosenbaum, you said pity neighbor against neighbor. Because Mr. Rosenbaum, you said pity neighbor against neighbor, as you stated earlier. That's exactly what this will do. So we would like development, but we want it to be pleasing to everyone, not just one person. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Willie. Any other opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Dorothy Phant. I live at thirty-two oh seven North Sixteenth Street. I, um, I'm a little nervous right now. I haven't spoken before. People like this in a long time. I'm eighty-three years old, so I need, bear with me. I wrote it out because I didn't want to, um, I didn't want to take so much time, so I just wrote it out and I'm gonna read it, okay? It says, um, this is my first time speaking. "I am expressing my concerns about the development, the development at thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street. I have been living in my home for sixty-one years, since December second, nineteen sixty-two. As a longtime resident of this neighborhood, I have seen the neighborhood go down and start to go back up. I have witnessed both the decline and the revitalization of our community. I have seen homeowners invest their time and effort into restoring houses, bringing back the pride that was once lost. I have also seen new developments that seamlessly blend with existing homes. They enhance the area and bring in new residents which bring in new development and growth. However, the proposed building at thirty-two oh four North Fourt- Sixteenth Street does not fit in with the style of our neighborhood, which is stated requirement, which is a stated requirement of the peer program the developer is using. Its design is too tall and does not blend in with surrounding houses. Even though the existing code says that the building could be taller or higher, I will certainly, it will certainly not blend in with the style of existing housing in our area and neighborhood. We have a preview of what the developer intends to build. At thirty-three twenty-four North, thirty-two twenty-four Emmett Street, the neighbors are disappointed in the Emmett Street building currently under construction by the same developer and fear that thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street will be a copy with very little difference. The comments are, they're saying, it's too tall, it's a dark box. Where the people going to park, there isn't any parking now. This is an eyesore." These are just comments from the neighbors and, and property owners. A new proposed development at thirty-two oh fourteen, thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street appears to be a copy of Emmett Street with very little variation. As with Emmett Street for thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street, not all existing property owners within three hundred feet of the property line per statute were properly notified. I own a lot at Sixteenth and Lotford and did not receive notification for the Emmett Street development and did not receive notification regarding the same lot within three hundred feet of thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth. Other neighbors are also saying they failed to receive notification. Notification is to be delivered to every parcel within thirty, three hundred feet of all the property line. Furthermore, I am concerned about the proposed plan to, for parking. According to the current standards, new construction should provide off-street parking for its residents. And any resident in the area should be able to park on the proposed space. Because of the height and placement of this building, it will create blind spots now and after the city completes improvement to the streets and sidewalks. How do I know this? Because I live across the street. I would like to see modification to the proposed structure to blend in with existing housing. I don't dislike Mr. Curry. I applaud him. But we want our neighborhood to look better and encourage new people to help our neighborhood with growth and development by moving in, not moving out. That's it. Thank you.
Any other opponents? Okay. I can't. Yeah, i- if you want to make a quit, a quick statement.
Bob Edwards, one four seven six Spencer. One more thing, there were twenty-three letters in opposition from the neighbors regarding this comp, this building. One who was from Detroit said it remind him of the three-story walk-ups that were terrible in his town. It's just a carbon copy of those.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna close the public hearing. Don, give you an opportunity to come up and
Thank you.
address all the concerns here.
So you, you're absolutely right.
We'll need your name and address.
Don Curry, thirty-three twenty-four North Sixteenth Street, developer for, uh, thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street. You're absolutely right. It, it is a, a, a carbon copy of a walk-up in cities such as Detroit and such as Chicago. What developers have realized in larger cities is that, again, if we're going to build affordable housing, we cannot go with a duplex or a single-family home because it's a sunken cost. Now, someone had mentioned earlier, that beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And everyone that stood up here today has said to me that my building is horrible. It's horrendous looking. It's an eyesore to the community. I drive every day up Sixteenth Street from Ames all the way to Sixteenth and Emmett. I've been over there for the past year. People are saying that the parking's horrible over there. I, I, I know what horrible parking is. I've had to walk two blocks, three blocks to my place in Chicago. People are saying that we're not providing on-site parking. We are providing on-site parking. The statute states that you have to have two parking spaces for every unit in our building. All we're merely saying is that because no one parks on the corner of Sixteenth and Emmett and no one parks on Emmett Street directly, which are both, again, on the side of my, my property on Emmett, that we can have three cars park on the street, just as everyone else does. Same situation on Sixteenth and Spencer. We're allowing three-car garage for three of the car, three of the ten, three of the tenants and three spaces. It doesn't matter where they park. We're not earmarking parking. We're just saying on, on-street parking. That's it. It's not a bio-pond. It's a water retention pond. And based on the height of the building, th- there's gonna be a massive amount of water that comes down it as far as snow, melting, and also rain. So this bio-retention pond has a drain in the middle of it that runs directly, connects directly to the sewer system. There's no, there's no, there's not directly to the sewer system. It's actually gonna run, if I'm not mistaken, out, out into Sixteenth Street, and we're connecting to the sewer for that one. Yeah, so we're connecting to the sewer system there. So it's a retention, water retention pond. I mean, I, I, I'm quite aware of what a, a, a bio-retention pond would be, and any type of pond that would be a host to mosquitoes, and that's the last thing that I wouldn't do. Um, so back to aesthetics. So this building is on the corner of Sixteenth and Spence, Sixteenth and Pinkney. And again, this is one block north of my development. And we can see the height of this building as well. Uh, it looks like it was a multifamily building. I don't know if it's commercial or, or what. So, 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 so. Okay, but again, it, it's still sitting there. So just based on how I'm feeling right now, which is, I'm coming into what, what I consider to still be my community, and, and again, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. What, what you're saying is that because we don't like how it looks, we don't want it here. I mean, and I, I'm, I'm doing nothing that's any different because I chose a, a color that doesn't, I don't wanna do cookie cutter. That's not me. That's not what this city deserves. I don't want to basically come in and put my personal touch on something that looks like everything else in the neighborhood. That's not the direction that I wanna go. And I, I, and I, I just have a per, uh, just a hard time really sitting here listening to what you all were saying. And, and I don't know, I don't, only know one person that spoke up here, one person. And my mom always told me, anytime someone says what they, what they want for you, they really don't want it for you. I'll leave it at that. And, and again, everyone said they want me to build, I, 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 I reached out. No one showed up. No one showed up.
Yeah, how did you say?
We, we went, we went door to door. We walked around that neighborhood with the flyer and no one showed up.
Just a second.
And what I, and what I did, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna ask everybody in the audience that Don sat quietly while you guys all talked. So if you would give him the same courtesy, thank you very much.
And, and, and to my fault, what I probably should have done, because again, all the verbiage that I've gotten is set within three hundred feet of the property. So I looked at it from the perspective that, okay, I'm gonna go within three hundred feet of thirty-two oh four North Sixteenth Street to notify everyone that, hey, let's talk, let's meet at this site and talk about what we, what we're, what we're looking to do on the second development, what we're looking to do on the third development, what we're looking to do on the fourth development. If, if it's a matter of the color, you know what, you all, you win. I'll change it to pink and, and yellow. I'll change it to yellow and blue. If it's a matter of the color, we, we can do that. But as far as the height is concerned, it's zoned for multifamily housing, and I could, I could have went up to six stories if I chose to, and I didn't. So we, we can change the color, we can change, and, and then for you to say that, oh, he showed, uh, trim around, we're, we're not, we're nowhere near getting to the point of what we're gonna do to the outside of the building at all. You all could have came to me, Mom, and said, hey, son, before we lit, litter the community and have everyone looking at you, a- a- as you got me posted now, we wanna meet with you and talk to you about Sixteenth and Spencer. Instead of, instead of this? Thank you.
One thing, thank you, Don, for that. Um, and if you, if you'd like to have a seat.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm excited for, for your, your project. This is more of a comment for the neighbors, uh, that are in opposition. I'm wondering, and maybe Eric can speak to this. Um, so the, the City of Omaha's planning department has a neighborhood planning division that helps residents of neighborhoods organize to, um, access certain resources so that they can be proactive in how they want to see their neighborhood look and feel. Um, I don't know if there are covenants, restrictions, the planning department, and I know that there are staff here that can help you after the meeting to determine exactly what it is. But there are things that neighbors in places can do to be proactive. I'm wondering, I'm looking at the, 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 this lot on, uh, Google, and, I mean, it's visibly blighted. I'm wondering how long it's been, been sitting here vacant. So I can understand how frustrated you are when you're coming here and trying to do something proactive in a place that you call home. And by the way, being born across the street isn't a prerequisite to invest in a place.
No doubt.
You could be from anywhere and, and choose to invest your time and money here. I think that that's a, um, an unfortunate conception about development. You have to be born across the street, which you do not. But I'm just wondering for neighbors, if there's a resource that our planning department can provide them. So for other building structures, properties within their neighborhood, that they can take some proaction to determine how they want those to look and feel. And so maybe there's something that we can do after the meeting to help them um, so that they feel goo- feel good about the future development of where they live.
It's a good idea, seriously.
Hey, thank you, Don. Um, any additional comments or question? No, the public hearing's closed, sir. Um, any additional comment? Uh, sir, if, if one of the planning mem- board members wanted to call you up, they could, but I don't. Okay, any additional comments or questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so honestly, there's a lot in there and a lot of good dialogue. You know, I guess there was just some comments that I wanted to touch on. Uh, Don mentioned, yeah, the existing base R seven zoning, you could go to a height limit of seventy-five, uh, feet in height. So, um, I think Barbara mentioned, you know, that wanting to go up a matter of inches for the, the design plans, yes, that's fine. Let's incorporate those into, um, the P U R, P U R plans as they move forward. You know, I don't know how the, the board will vote today, but that can be incorporated before it goes to city council preferably. Just, um, you know, so everybody's kind of aware of, um, that modification. But yeah, absolutely, the R seven zoning, uh, which is all over this neighborhood, um, even though there is a lot of single-family homes. Uh, there's a, a lot of other types of housing, though. There are, there is multifamily. There is, um, a lot of office and commercial buildings on Sixteenth Street. So, you know, I know there was a lot of discussion about form of, and the style of this building, and that is something that we looked at as city staff. I remember having conversations even before, uh, the application because they were seeking feedback with the site plan review. And, um, I sat down with two of my managers and, and we looked at it, and we looked at the area. And, um, I would say, yeah, on Sixteenth Street, there are a lot more flat-roofed buildings. Perhaps as you get deeper into the neighborhoods, in a way, there's more pitched roofs. But there is a combination in, in all different types and styles of, um, of form of the buildings. And so that is definitely something that staff looked at both previously, a couple of months ago, as well as when this application came in. You know, Don touched on the bio-retention basin that is probably to meet the stormwater requirements. Public Works is here and can speak to that. Um, you know, there was a discussion about C S O project or street plans. You know, the right-of-way line, the property line is not moving with this project. So, um, you know, the, the sidewalk that is being installed and the street trees, those will be going within, you know, the public right-of-way. You know, the, the building location is based off of the property line. We have several departments and other organizations that are involved in the review process of all these applications. Um, Public Works Traffic Division is one of those. Something they consider is sightlines whenever you have intersections. And so there's, there's always considerations, um, with, with building types and setbacks. So that, that is always considered during our review.
Bob had mentioned setbacks. The setbacks have been.
Yeah, so as we've discussed, um, multiple times, the zoning code that's in place has a largely suburban setback requirements across all, um, all of the zoning districts, to be frank. And, um, yeah, I think it was discussed, the base district does require thirty-five-foot front setback, twenty-five-foot rear setback. Well, when you chop that out, that's sixty feet out of a fairly small property. It would be difficult for a small, single-family home to be developed and, and meet some of the setback requirements of the R seven district. So it is not unexpected, and it is very common for such a project, an infill project, that you would utilize the P U R tool, which incorporates modifications of setbacks. Um, really, the only request is modifying those setbacks as well as the parking to reduce it from, you know, as was mentioned by the applicant, um, the six required stalls on site to, um, to have three on-street parking stalls as well as three parking stalls on site. And that ratio, even if you did not have the available on-street parking, the one-to-one ratio is typically supported for infill projects. But obviously, there is adjacent on-street parking. Uh, we do believe there's ample parking in the area. So, um, really, the only modifications with the P U R are the setbacks and then that parking to recognize those on-street stalls. I don't know if I have anything else to add. You know, obviously, we encourage coordination and meetings. You know, Sidney, you had asked about resources. Yeah, City, City of Omaha Planning Department, we're always willing to, to meet with people if they have concerns about projects they're seeing in the neighborhood, if they wanna come in and express those. You know, sometimes that's, that's just the best way is, you know, set up a meeting and, and talk to the, um, planning staff who, who typically meet with developers. And, you know, we can always relay that information, so.
Even more broadly, like from a neighborhood association or coalition building standpoint, there are resources for those associations to help them be more proactive as opposed to reactive in some of these processes. It's kind of what I meant.
Absolutely, yep. We have, um, we have different divisions that deal with, with neighborhoods. I'm, in fact, going to a neighborhood meeting, uh, this evening at five-thirty as, along with a neighborhood planner. So, a different neighborhood, of course, but, uh, we are always willing to, to go to meetings that they are holding and, and talk about projects or just talk about zoning in general. So, um, yes, we have a lot of resources and are willing to meet with and have conversations with, with anybody. But as I would say, I, uh, would encourage further coordination with the applicant, um, proponents, opponents. You know, depending on how this is voted on today, it will still need to go to city council ultimately. That's the final authorizing body for a P U R. So, um, there is ample time, even if it is recommended for approval by the board today, to, um, have, you know, continued meetings and conversations that we always encourage. So unless there's any questions, um, from me or Public Works staff, the city recommends approval of the P U R overlay district subject to smittal of acceptable final plans prior to city council.
Any comments, questions? Kate, do we have a motion?
We approve of the P U R planned unit redevelopment overlay district subject to smittle of acceptable final plan prior to city council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Um, yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Okay, I think that was the last adjourned item. Thank you all for coming down and making passionate arguments and, yes. But we gotta, we gotta go through minutes and then adjourn, so. We're just about over. Well, thank you. Yep, yep, okay. All right. For the November pre-meeting and public meeting minutes, do we have a motion? For the November pre-meeting and public meeting minutes, do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Franklin?
Abstain.
Approved, four to zero.
Do we have a motion for adjournment? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Franklin?
Abstain.
Approved, four to zero.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?